You know, my mom got her, her tooth, actually, no, I guess it's been almost three weeks ago. And she had zero, I mean, she got it and she felt fine. Me, I guess, a little bit of soreness in the arm from just more from the shot than the actual, I think, vaccine. So it seems like the symptoms for the booster have been less than the symptoms from the original shot.
That's good. Now you have superpowers, Steve.
Well, let's hope so. Jim, Jim Reese is here. Hey, Jim. You hear us?
So we know that Billy wasn't going to be here tonight, but we were anticipating Chris Paray and also Linda. We might have a call in.
This is Linda.
Excellent. Hi, Linda. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi, Linda.
Hi.
And Roger on the phone or is he on the computer?
I'm on the phone.
Okay.
This is Jim Reese. I can hear you. Sorry about that. I'm trying to get my call in set up there.
Okay, you can hear me okay, right, Steve?
Yep, I can. Very loud and clear.
Yeah, Karen's got the computer room.
So of those we were anticipating, the only one I don't see yet, and maybe, let's see, is Chris Paray.
And Cynthia, normally Chris calls me and he hasn't yet. So my, I know he's been having to deal with a bunch of moving situation. And so my guess is he may not be making it tonight.
Okey doke. Okay. Well, we are, we are like two minutes, two minutes after seven, so
Okay.
we have corn. So if we don't anticipate.
If Chris joins us, that would be great. Julian is here. No reason to wait for anyone else if Julian's here. So
On YouTube.
Go ahead and start the recording if you haven't.
We are recording.
Okay, you may call to order the meeting.
Awesome. Planning Commission meeting is called to order on October 27, 2021 at 7:02 PM.
Thank you. Would you take the role, please?
Sure. Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Reese. Trustee Taylor.
Julian? I think he froze.
Well, we'll come back. We'll go down the list. Commissioner Blakemore? Here. Commissioner Cornell?
Here.
Commissioner Glasser?
Here.
Commissioner Herring?
Here.
Going to try again. I think I see Chris Paray has joined us.
Here.
Commissioner Paray, excellent. And trustee Taylor.
It looks like he fell off the call.
Okay. Well, keep him handy because I think that he's, I saw him. So I know that he is here. Respectively.
I can put in the chat, Cynthia, that's helpful when he jumps back on.
That would be helpful. Thanks, Mike. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey. Thank you. I guess we'll go on with the approval of the minutes. As everyone had a chance to read over the minutes, and if you have any comments, please make them at this time.
Cynthia, did you want to share with the commissioners the recommendations Billy had, just so they know?
Sure. There were some just minor edits from Billy Giblin, Commissioner Giblin, in terms of some comments that he had made. So I made some very minor edits. I don't think it changed content at all, but it was just kind of fleshing out what he was trying to say about the hers. I also spelled it wrong, so he caught me on that one and then provided just a little extra commentary there that I wrapped into the minutes. So nothing major, but just a clarification from him. And that was prior to the meeting. He let us know that last week, I believe.
Okay.
Awesome.
I did want to mention that this Jim Reese, I listened to the whole previous meeting on YouTube and so I feel like I'm up to speed on that, but I'm not 100% sure whether or not I need to abstain or not from the vote.
Well, you weren't at the
August 25.
Well, August 25, you were there, Jim, weren't you?
No, I was absent, but I listened back to it two days later.
Okay. But I think you should still abstain to pass the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? From the August 25 meeting?
This is Linda. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
That was Julian?
Yes.
Wonderful. And I think Roger, you were also absent, correct? So you were going to abstain?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. All right. So we're going to go down the list here. Chair Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yeah.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Paray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
I abstain.
Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you. And trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on, do we have any public comment from anyone here joining the meeting that wants to speak on not part of tonight's agenda? Or anyone else on the meeting from the public?
This is Rick Hendrickson. I've got a comment.
Okay, go ahead. Rick, you have three minutes.
Won't take that long. Just my usual fall reminder that it's wood burning season and paper bags are a no-no for your ashes. Good ash buckets with tight fitting seal or lids. And we don't have any snow yet to dump your ashes into. So really be careful with those. Let them sit a little longer than you think. We don't want to have a repeat of any of the past fires we've had due to ashes. So that's all. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for that timely reminder since we had just a little teaser last night. Okay, anyone else from the public wish to speak? If not, I will close the public comment and non-agenda items and we will move to our action items. We have one tonight, which is the, discuss the remaining 2021 Planning Commission meeting dates. And I assume, Miranda, you want to introduce this or Cynthia?
I think either one. Cynthia, do you want to take it? I'll do the other two. Unless, Cynthia, you're still on mute.
Yes. Sorry about that. Dropped my pen. So as is typical for our November and December meetings, they fall very close to the holidays. The November meeting would be November 24. And the December meeting would be December 22. And you know that despite a global pandemic, some people do go away. So we try to seek alternative meeting date or dates. And this year we were looking at November 17. That's a Wednesday. We try to keep it on at least the same day of the week, even though we have to shift it around. So if, if folks are aware of any scheduling conflicts, that would be good to get a heads up now. So we can try to set that meeting date and be aware of that. We don't have any applications in the queue. But it's good to be aware because when we move that date up, then it condenses the public noticing requirement time. So it's likely we wouldn't have anything for that date, but we still have a few more days where potentially that could happen. That we could get an application. And does anyone see any foresee any scheduling conflicts at, at this stage for November 17?
Yeah, this is Steve. We'll be heading down to Texas to celebrate the birth, the one-year birthday of our grandson. So we won't be getting back till the next day, the 18th.
Okay. Vice Chair Reese, do you feel comfortable helming that meeting?
Yes, I do.
Excellent.
It sounds like it works for everybody else, so that should be fine.
Just for my clarification, is that then meaning that we're not doing a December meeting? Since we're only talking about one rescheduled date?
But I think the thought was, you know, it's not worth a holiday the next day, although there should be a consideration of December. Because town staff, we actually will celebrate the holiday on the 23rd and the 24th. And so there may be a desire of the planning commission to move that December 1 as well.
In the past, we've sort of combined them into one meeting sometime around beginning of December. I'm wondering based upon what agenda items might be coming up, is that maybe a wise thing to do again this year?
I think unless we have any pending applications, it's, you know, it has happened in some years. We've had a meeting in November and a meeting in December. But some other years, we've just crammed them into one meeting. We don't tend to get a lot of applications at this time, but it still could happen. And so we'd say that if we did get a pending application between now and then, we'd probably be reaching out, looking for an opportunity to meet in December. That's often usually the third Wednesday of the month, just to shift things up. But we would have to see. I know there are groups meeting.
Sorry, Cynthia. I would ask that the planning commission consider a December meeting because of the parking code. So we anticipate bringing that before the Board of Trustees at their meeting on the 7th of December. And then I know after their first review, they're going to ask that the boards and commissions weigh in. And I don't think there's a desire for them wanting to wait until January for that to occur. And so my, I guess my ask would be, would the planning commission consider a meeting on the 15th of December? With the intention of discussing parking code.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds reasonable, I think. We also have members check their calendars to see if the 15th of December will work as well as the 17th of November. Any conflicts?
Not for me.
Both those dates work for me, Jim Reese.
Okay.
This is Stephanie. Those dates should work for me as well. Thank you.
Okay.
They should work for me as well, Chris.
Okay.
At this time, they should work for me as well.
Okay.
Mister Roger should be able to make them both.
Perfect. Okay, I think it, those dates will work. So could we have a, I guess we'd need to do a motion to the meeting dates. Would someone like to do that?
A move.
That's, is that with Chris?
That's Chris.
A second. This is Jim.
And that's Jim.
Okay.
All right. We will go down the list for it. Start backwards with trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Paray?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
And last but not certainly not last, at least Vice, excuse me, Chair Williams.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Motion passes.
Okay, very good. Okay, I think that does it for our action items this evening. We'll move on to discussion items and we have two discussion items on the agenda tonight. The first will be to discuss the Planning Commission bylaws. And Miranda, I assume you will lead this?
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily going to read each section in its entirety, but what we'd like to do is go article by article and ask for any feedback, comments, questions that you may have. As I noted in the email, Attorney Madison is not with us tonight, but I will take any questions or comments back to her. So if that works for you, Chair Williams, that was my thought for how to tackle this.
I think that sounds great.
Right. So first is Article 1, the name. I'm going to probably safely assume there are no comments, but I will leave it open. Okay, Article 2, excuse me, is the mission. And so the one reduction Attorney Madison has here is removing Chapter 18, where the focus is, of course, on 16 and 17. Are there other amendments to this section?
This is Roger. Miranda, I'm not certain where it goes, but the one spot that I have, several places where it talks about the different chapters. And also talks about responsibilities for special review and all the things that the planning commission does. I feel that we actually ought to include Chapter 15 annexations. Because that is actually one of our jobs is to review the annexation, make recommendations to the Board of Trustees. So wherever you mentioned all the duties and all the different chapters, I think it's certainly not Chapter 18, but Chapter 15, 16, and 17 should be included together. So that it's always understood that the planning commission will review when and if there is an annexation.
So I just went through and added it where the chapters are referenced, but back to the commission, do you agree with integrating 15 into this?
Yeah, wherever it should, wherever it should be, that's what I feel it is. Because it actually is in Chapter 15, Article 6, responsibilities. And it says, you know, under 153, PC will review, hold a public hearing and make a written statement to the BOT on the annexation. So, you know, it's definitely one of our duties and it, I think, so it should always be there, should always be upfront. But this is one of the things we do.
Yeah, I want to add that. Are there, does everyone, is there agreement or does anyone have a concern with adding Chapter 15?
That's fine by me, Chris.
Okay, cool.
Looks good.
I think it's good.
Roger, I want to add now. Oh, go ahead, Karen, sorry.
I have a question for Roger. Where, I'm looking at Chapter 15 right now. Where does it reference the planning?
It says it's under Chapter 15, Article 6, 153, parentheses, 4. PC will, the planning commission will review, have a public hearing, make a written statement to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, Section 153 preliminary steps.
15341.
153A?
153, then parentheses, number four, paragraph four. There's only one sentence.
Oh, I see. Section 153, uh, section A4.
Yes.
Yeah, it also refers to the planning department. That's different than the planning commission.
Under 4, it says the planning commission will hold a hearing.
Shall review the annexation.
Everything else is planning department.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think. So, so I think maybe what we want to add there is in the mission statement, the on two, three, the fourth last line, provide other annexation, planning, zoning, and land use services as implemented through the provisions of Chapter 15, or Chapters 15, 16, and 17.
So I'm assuming, Karen, when you say annexation, like as its own with the comma here, yes, not annexation planning? You want those as two separate?
I think so, right? Other
Okay, yeah.
Annexation, planning, zoning, and land use services.
Okay.
All those things, I wasn't really going to comment on that. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And I'm sure that Jennifer, she's redoing it all, so I just assumed that Jennifer would, our attorney, would just put the language in there whichever way she wanted to put it. But that's, that's absolutely wonderful.
Why don't we leave it like that for now and then we'll see what, how Jennifer wants to word it?
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, and she'll bring this back for, we'll bring it back at the November meeting for voting approval.
Right.
So are there other changes? Any other additions to the mission?
Well, this is Steve. I just had a quick question. In the past, the members of the planning commission have worked with the BOT to look at other parts of the town code and, and help. I think we, we had a committee working that was headed up by Dallas a few years ago. So the question is, you know, should we be involved in reviewing other chapters of the code? To, you know, to help to clean it up and review and so forth? Or do we not even have to?
I may turn to trustee Taylor, and I think, yes, there are going to be numerous opportunities where the board will want to turn it to the planning commission. And so perhaps there should be a line, but trustee Taylor, what do you think?
Oh, I think that's a very valid addition. Certainly, we know that we have problems with certain sections of the town code. Lord knows it was written by amateurs to start with, but we're all amateurs here. And as unpaid amateurs, we have to help each other. So I would say, yes, we will certainly be turning to the planning commission as we review issues within the town code.
So Steve, do you want to propose maybe what that, that additional language might look like or trustee Taylor, if you thought?
I have not thought about that. I will be glad to think about that carefully. And well, let's, let's see, is this, is this, is this easy? Maybe this is easy. And
Could it be something as simple as and review town code as directed by BOT?
Well, that, that was what I was, yes, I think you are correct. That is, that is good warning, good wording. We may well turn, if we were to turn to any group to review Netherland Code, I think the appropriate group would be planning commission. And I believe we will be asking you to look at code that we're reviewing.
Yeah, that was my feeling, Julian.
I did say, and review to provide recommendation, because I think we want to definitely hear, get the insight of the planning commission.
Well, then I would say the term might be, then this, this is turning into a, so I'm talking as a writer now. This is turning into a run-on sentence. I would almost propose making this a new sentence and saying the, the, the commission shall also review, provide, review and recommend. I would, I like the word, I think review is a good word. I think Commissioner Reese is right that that's a good word. So I would say make this a new sentence and simply instead of saying and, because we've got a bunch of ands in there. I would say the commission shall also review and recommend amendments to town code as directed by the Board of Trustees.
So I made this as a semi-colon because that's kind of how it is throughout. There are no new sentences. It's just semicolons.
It's like, it's like article, okay, it's like Article 1, Section 8 of the Constitution. Okay, that's fine then.
That serves as a new sentence, but yeah, okay.
When we do a constitution reading, we ask people to count the sentences in Article 1, Section 8. And of course, it's only one sentence.
Yeah, it's one here as well.
Yeah, okay, got it. I think that looks good.
Yeah.
So this, this is Karen again. You know, I'm looking at that and thinking that that's not a primary mission of the planning commission. So, so I'm wondering if it belongs in that article. Maybe it would be better in Article 6, responsibilities, where we talk about a working knowledge of Chapter 18. Yeah, I think the mission may be something that comes from the municipal code and/or the the state statutes. And I can look to see if, if it's in the municipal code.
About the planning commission shall review and recommend, oops, where did it go? Yeah. Recommend amendments to town code as directed by the Board of Trustees.
Are we sure we want shall there? Because shall is an imperative directive in second and third person. I think will would be entirely acceptable.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Oh, my God, we're moving from up here.
That's just a suggestion. If, if, if anybody thinks shall is more appropriate, again, because it does say as directed by. So, okay, I can see that.
So Karen, maybe we can come back after you've taken a look at code here. Does everyone feel okay? Oh, go ahead.
I see it in Chapter 2, Article 11. So that is all about the planning commission. Section 2, 272 is the purpose. And so, let's see.
I think you have, are you saying, Karen, because I can't pull it up at the same time, that this original statement here is word for word matching code? Because I think the option could be to make amendments here and then do an ordinance, amendments to clean up that section of code in Chapter 2. To mirror the bylaws if the mission in the bylaws changes.
Um, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't listening carefully to what you were saying. I was reading.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's a word for word, because obviously making even this annexation in Chapter 15. If we could have an opportunity where we update Chapter 2 to mirror the mission as adopted in the bylaws.
Well, the master plan includes annexation. And the master plan is the first item listed in the purpose for the planning. item listed in the purpose for the planning commission.
Okay.
But, yeah, I guess I would say, I don't see that that's a, you know, a primary function of the planning commission to review the municipal code. So I would say that we don't put it into the bylaws. But that's my opinion and, um, you know, maybe we can vote on it.
So Williams, I mean, I know we've moved it down. I don't know if we want to keep going until we get to Article Six and then make that determination of whether it belongs there or, okay.
Let's leave it in six for now, and then we can come back to it when we get there. People can think about it.
I mean, I mean, perhaps we're talking really more about, not a sentence talking specifically about reviewing code, but a more general term about the planning commission's role as advisor to the Board of Trustees as regards areas of, of its expertise. So it's a possibility that, I, I understand Karen's concern and I think it makes good sense. So maybe this is, this should be a more general statement about the advisory role of the planning commission, which may already be in here.
So I might, yeah, that would be in six, so maybe we'll just jump. Is there anything else for the mission before I go on to membership?
There are some formatting.
Yeah.
Miranda, there's some formatting errors in that mission statement. It just has extra spaces in there, and I mentioned that already to Jennifer.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. All right, we'll work on that. Uh, membership, any comments on the membership? Okay, how about the terms?
So the last sentence in the terms is not correct. It, it says vacancies occurring otherwise than through the expiration of term shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term by the mayor in the case of members selected or appointed by him or her or by the Board of Trustees in the case of the board member. I'll have a, a new statement to replace that one, which I've run by Jennifer and she has approved it. But basically, the mayor always appoints members of the planning commission with the approval of the Board of Trustees. So it, it's not the case that sometimes the Board of Trustees chooses the, the member and sometimes the mayor does. It's always the mayor with approval by the trustees. So the statement is, um, that I have is, is vacancies occurring otherwise than through the expiration of term shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term through appointment by the mayor with the approval of the Board of Trustees, except that the trustees' term on the planning commission shall coincide with that member's term as a trustee.
Karen, would it be possible for you to copy and paste that into chat so I don't butcher it here?
Yeah. I think so.
Karen, and this is Jim Reese. I'm just curious, is this as a result of the meeting earlier today? The public meeting you guys had to discuss this? I wasn't able to attend, but I wondered if, if some of these changes are coming from that.
The public meeting this morning was about building code, not bylaws.
I'm sorry, I got confused.
Karen did connect one-on-one with Attorney Mattson though, prior to her being out. So that's where this conversation happened. It happened one-to-one between Karen and Attorney Mattson. Okay, so that's, I just pasted her, Karen's revised comment. I will say too, Karen, that the, the language for pro-sab and sab actually does mirror what you have here. So for consistency's sake, that makes sense.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I didn't create this on my own. I did pick it up from somewhere else. I, I forget where, what that was, where that was.
Okay, but that gets the idea that you're trying to get across, correct?
Sorry, what was that, Steve?
I say that, um, the sentence you have there now is getting the idea that you wanted to, um, to get across to us.
Yeah, yeah, which was, um, what Attorney Mattson had there, indicated that the Board of Trustees, um, selects the trustee member who would be part of the planning commission. And otherwise, the mayor selected the members of the planning commission. But, um, the way it really works is that the mayor does the selection, but the, of all the members and the Board of Trustees approves. So it just got, I know, um, there was, uh, Attorney Mattson actually started with something else. It was about the stager terms and, um, the statement there that you can, I don't know if you can see it on the right, um, what she had there, what was originally there that she deleted.
Is there any opposition to this change? Okay, let's go. Next section, removal. Any comments? Okay, then back where we were kind of were, responsibilities. We obviously have this, this comment added in. Question, is it belonging at all or it should be here or not? And then any other questions or comments?
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with it because if the Board of Trustees asks us to help them review the code, we would certainly do it. But it doesn't say we're going to do it, it just says, uh, as directed by the Board of Trustees. Any other comments?
I agree. I, I, I think that anything that the BOT, you know, I mean, we're a supporting board of them. So, I mean, if they ask us to do something, uh, you know, I think we pretty much need to include that. And that's something that, uh, all of these are, are living documents, you know, that need to be adjusted as, as changes occur. So, uh, you know, I, I think that looks good, uh, right there, the way you have it.
Any other comments?
Well, I mean, I, I'm just wondering why we're calling that out. You know, the, the mission of the planning commission is provide recommendations based on planning considerations to the Board of Trustees. And, um, why are we, why, why is that now another, um, responsibility of the planning commission? I, I don't quite understand that.
Karen actually does have a really good point here in that, if you'll recall, the Board of Trustees turned to the planning commission last year, I think, and asked the planning commission if it would arbitrate disputes between the town administrator and other town employees. And the planning commission agreed to take that on. It just seemed like we, we needed a responsible board to kind of help in that case. And the Board of Trustees was already, uh, on the hook for certain of those, of those arbitrations. And so that leads me to believe that if we're going to include anything like this, it's probably more along the lines of the, the planning commission. It, it's basically talking about how the planning commission may have other responsibilities as delegated by the Board of Trustees, rather than something specific like this. And we're not including in the bylaws anything about arbitrating disputes between town staff. And yet the Board of, and yet, yet the planning commission very graciously agreed to take that on if there was a dispute. And that's not in the bylaws, and yet that is something the planning commission has agreed to do. So I understand Karen's concern. This may be too specific. It, it may be more a, you know, that, that the planning commission will cooperate with the Board of Trustees on, you know, various issues.
We could, Julian, we could make like another, or a last bullet to that extent that basically says that, uh, the, the planning commission will work with the Board of Trustees. What's the word?
So Steve, in the military, when you're an officer and you get assigned to a company, you have a list of your formal responsibilities, and then there's always a catch-all that says, "And additional duties as assigned by the commander." So, so maybe a catch-all phrase like that, additional duties as requested by the BOT is what we're looking for. Instead of something that's specific is what we have there, uh, right now.
I think that makes good sense, I think. And then we remove that specific statement.
So Cynthia, there is something called the planning process whereby the board would take it through the advisory boards. And so they're directing the advisory boards to consider specific topics. They did that with the sustainability scorecard and things like that. So you, you could make mention of utilizing the Netherlands planning process to get input or feedback as directed by the BOT or as tired by the BOT.
So you want to say additional duties as requested by the Board of Trustees outlined in the, the Netherlands planning process? It's a lot of ads there, but.
It, it looks like the. Well, the specific issue as regards, for example, arbitrating disputes between town staff, I don't think that's part of the Netherlands planning process.
I would just leave it generic like we have it.
I think that leaves us open to, you know, just doing the right thing.
Okay.
And I can't really see the time where if the BOT asked us to take on a task that we would say, you know, I mean, unless it was far, far, you know, like hiring the next town manager or something. Uh, but I'm sorry, uh, that's not going to happen for a long, long time though.
Yeah, wait a minute, what are you trying to say?
But I, I think that leaving that generic like that is, is a good catch-all.
Erin, are you comfortable with making it a bullet, like a generic bullet?
So, I, yeah, I, I don't know anything about the arbitration between the, uh, town administrator and other people. I wasn't involved in those discussions. So, and, and I guess what I heard Julian say is that that was, um, an arrangement that was agreed upon by both professors. So I, I would prefer just not to put that bullet in there. And then if something comes up in the future that the, um, that the Board of Trustees would like the planning commission to weigh in on, they could ask the, um, planning commission if they would agree to do that and then it would be, so.
Karen, this was part of the work rules proposed for town staff by Jennifer. And in Jennifer's initial proposal, if there was a dispute between, for example, the town administrator and the town clerk, the arbitrator who would resolve that dispute was going to be the town administrator. And that just made no sense to the Board of Trustees. And since the Board of Trustees was already tightly involved in a lot of those operations, we needed a separate arbitrator to help resolve disputes of that sort that was not on-town staff. And that was when we came to the Board of, uh, to the planning commission and asked, "Would you guys help with this?" So that was, and maybe that is so specific that that should be one of the bullets. I don't recall. I don't know.
Well, that was outlined specifically for the encroachment agreement, because it was the clerk who would issue the encroachment. Now, that hasn't been fully adopted yet, that ordinance.
Okay.
And so it is kind of a one-off there.
Okay.
But I do think I could, you know, there may be future circumstances though, where the planning commission is the deciding factor in something like that.
So I see, so we're still finalizing that ordinance, guy.
Yes.
I, I think I'm gonna, this is Jim, I think I'm gonna push back on that just a little bit and say, you know, we don't want to have to come in here and update this every single time the BOT thinks of something they need us to do. And I would reiterate that having this bullet the way it is as a catch-all is actually a good thing and covers us so that we don't have to have however long it's going to be in this discussion, uh, every year or every time there's a change. Uh, I, I don't understand why there's a problem with just having that in there the way it is.
Oh, okay, I, I think it's fine.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Are there other comments on responsibility? Are we good to move on to the next one?
There is, uh, I do have one, the second paragraph, where it talks about envision Netherlands twenty twenty and later adopted envisioned Netherlands plans. My comment is, why don't we say envision twenty twenty-one since the BOT has approved it? I also would remove and later adopted envisioned Netherlands plans because, um, they're not plans, they're vision statements. The comprehensive plan is a plan where it lays out, um, steps to be taken to realize the vision. But the vision statements are not plans in themselves. And I think we should be following the current vision because, uh, if we say the envision twenty twenty and then the later adopted envision plans, they could conflict. So my suggestion is to say something like, and goals of the town's comprehensive plan and the current envisioned Netherlands.
I know we called that document twenty thirty, thirty vision statements, and I'm not really sure that it even matters, but, um.
Well, it's the, it's the word plan when that's juxtaposed with, um, envision that I object to because it's not a plan. It doesn't have the policies and the, um, action items to accomplish to realize the vision. It just has the high-level vision statements.
I don't, I, I think that's just completely fine. I don't, does anyone have any opposition?
Should we just move, move the word current to, because it's also the current town's comprehensive plan? So we could say current town's comprehensive plan and envision Netherlands, something like that? Just, just move current? That way, both, both documents are current.
I would say the town's current rather than the current towns, because it might be for a different town.
That's true.
I think that's good, and that's another opportunity for that to, uh, as changes to, uh, the plans for that to, to be kind of again, a more of a generic statement that keeps the, uh, the bylaws, uh, you know, correct. It's opposed to having to come in and make additions every time there's a new envision plan or, or, uh, comprehensive plan. I do, I agree.
Moving on then to meetings? Okay, um, so you'll see in the meetings, they did add that component of a ten PM stop and. And there are two 30-minute extensions ending the meeting entirely by 11:00. Otherwise, you just kind of clarified that we are allowing, if the Board of Trustees allows, the meetings could continue in a virtual and/or hybrid in moving forward.
I think that's what we discussed last time.
So when you adopt that, does that then mean that that 11 o'clock is a hard cutoff time, even if we're very close to being complete? How's the BOT handle that?
That's a hard cutoff with the BOT.
They rush for that last handful of minutes to get it done. That's a hard stop.
It's pretty rare that we run into a serious problem there because partway through, between 10 and 11, we're talking about what portions of the agenda we may be able to drop. And so we may reschedule something to later, and that happens in that 10 to 11 period. So far, we haven't run into a situation where we've gone past 11. We're generally rescheduling if we have to, or we're just, we're just not, we're just not letting me talk as much, so.
Other comments, questions, recommendations?
All good.
Okay. Jennifer added a whole component for public hearing procedures and land use matters. Does anyone have any comments on that?
So this is a procedural thing, and I'm wondering if it's just a little bit too much detail to put into the bylaws. Do these show up in other committees and, and like for the Board of Trustees? Is that, is this kind of boilerplate kind of material?
The Board of Trustees has their kind of rules of procedure, like meeting procedures, not necessarily bylaws. You know, there is nothing this detailed in PROSAB or SAB. I know Jennifer's feeling was, obviously, the seriousness of land use matters and that them being quasi-judicial, but it was important to outline that here, and that was her thinking. But you know, that she pulled from other municipalities when amending these bylaws.
Okay. I guess my concern was having most of the documents pretty general, and then this one gets very specific.
I will just ask her the question because I can't answer that one.
Yeah. And I don't know how others feel on this either, but.
Well, I, I, I kind of like seeing it written down because just to be fair to the applicant, to always have the same set of steps and be sure that we follow them each time. I'm wondering about the word "appropriate" in the second paragraph of this article. Any person speaking may be questioned by a member of the Planning Commission where appropriate. So I guess what we're saying there is appropriate according to the order of the public hearing. Is that right, Miranda?
So Karen, are you looking for feedback from?
Yeah, yeah. What does appropriate mean?
I think it means appropriate by members of the town staff or the attorney in addition to the Planning Commission. That's the way I read it.
I, I find myself impressed by the inclusion of an opposing counsel, the possibility of someone speaking in opposition to the applicant. And I think that's an excellent idea, although we don't generally see it, and often there is no opposition. But that's cool. But I, I agree that where appropriate could probably stand a little illumination.
Yeah, thanks, Julian.
Maybe just remove that.
May be questioned by a member of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, that seems entirely reasonable.
By members of town staff or attorney or representative. So why are we saying appropriate in reference to the Planning Commission, but not?
And I, I wonder if Jennifer is taking into account the notion that the Planning Commission is acting as, in a judicial capacity, but asking questions wouldn't mess with that, only making statements would mess with that. So I think, I'm having trouble understanding where any form of asking questions would be inappropriate from anybody. So, yeah.
Miranda, why don't you flag that, and we'll just ask Jennifer?
Yeah. She may have some special reason.
The only thing I could think is that maybe it was if somebody had, you know, a conflict of interest who was on the Planning Commission, but then they should have recused anyway, so I agree. I'm not sure why that's.
That's covered, absolutely. That's covered separately, so, yeah. Good, good. It's a good thing to find out from Jennifer. Yeah.
Why is it?
If, if not, we can just strike.
Could it possibly be because we are giving recommendations as opposed to decisions?
And there, I think it would not be questioning. So I think by using the word "questioning," I think we're always appropriate, but I, again, Jennifer may have a magic answer there.
Yeah, I suppose there are some questions that would be appropriate that would be related to how the application conforms to the town code and the requirements that we're supposed to be evaluating. And there's other questions that wouldn't be relevant. So I think it needs to be spelled out, though, if that is, in fact, what she is saying there.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly need to remain on topic in ways that members of the public maybe do not need to remain on topic, but I think that's also understood from the process. And if that is what where appropriate means, then that needs to be called out specifically, I would say, in the first paragraph, that all questions must, that, that, that we cannot stray from the core topic, and it's up to the mayor to decide if we've gone too far. And that would be separate, meaning, you know, we're still questioning. It's not that the question is inappropriate, it's that the mayor may keep us on topic, something like that. Or not mayor, I'm sorry, the chairman would keep us on topic, of course.
Well, let's, let's ask her what she means by that, and then we can discuss it when, next meeting.
Karen, was there one more point? I think I missed it. Was there one more piece you wanted to get feedback on?
Um, I did, I did question the time limit. And my, my, I had an incorrect assumption. I was assuming that the three minutes was something that was identified already, that was written down as a rule for the Planning Commission. However, Jennifer said it's not. And it's just what we've been using. And she said that the chair has the authority to put a limit in place. And that could be three minutes, it could be less.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, and we had a situation years ago where we had a whole bunch of people slated to speak, and I believe we shortened the, the time limit accordingly based upon the amount of time it was going to take to get through everybody, so I think that's pretty fluid.
The, she said.
Typically default to three minutes.
Yeah. The, the planning, she said the Planning Commission does not have a set limit. However, the Board of Trustees' rules and procedures does discuss a three-minute limit on public comment. And the Board of Trustees' meeting procedures for public participation discusses a three-minute limit. But there's no document that says that three minutes is the limit for Planning Commission public comment.
And no matter, matter how many people are commenting, we generally stick to the three minutes. And there have been cases where we've had lots of people each speaking three minutes, some more. And we will pull items off the agenda if necessary in order to meet our 11 o'clock deadline.
So does that become the purview of the chairman then to decide, you know? Or is that, I mean, it sounds like to me that if there's no set written rule anywhere that three minutes is required, that that could be truncated to two minutes, you know, as Steve said, if they had 30 people to speak on one particular subject? Or are you suggesting trustee Taylor that it would be better to 86 other staff and be sure everybody got their say?
No, I was merely complaining about the BOT. Planning Commission apparently can shorten that at the chairperson's purview, and I think that's probably a good idea in a lot of cases.
And that's all we've done in the past.
Yeah, Jennifer says the chair has the general authority to preside at and run the meetings, including putting time limits into place.
Okay. So Karen, are you, I'm confused. Are you saying that we shouldn't do that, or we should?
No, I just thought I, since I had this discussion with Jennifer, that I would relay the information to the Planning Commission. I think we should leave the Article 8, the last sentence of the second paragraph, as is, where the chairperson may impose a time limit upon each speaker.
Okay. As I said, we typically have done three minutes, and it doesn't happen very often. It's always been three minutes.
Okay. I, I wanted to add one thing on this. I was not able to attend in August. But with our current environment that we're seeing in the country of folks, and I've talked to, you know, my wife, who, Alicia, most of you know, was the town manager here, in discussion about this, on how they handle things with public meetings down there and what she did when she was here. And I didn't know if we should put something formally in there, but about, you know, allowing the public to testify or to give comment as appropriate. And after I said, you know, we're seeing more and more of these stories on the news where people say, "I've got three minutes to just cuss you up one side and down the other and call you every name in the book." And that's, that's actually not true. We do not have to accept that. And that's not part of, of the mandate that says, "Yeah, we have to let you sit here and insult us" due to free speech rights. And so I wonder if we want to put something in there about, you know, civil public discourse, and if that's not adhered to, somebody could be cut off by, by the chairman.
Yeah. Jim, Jim, we discussed that at the BOT extensively. And the response from Jennifer was fairly clear. That is free speech.
Yeah, I disagree with that, and I think that we should look at getting some more information on that. I, I just, I just totally disagree with that, and I think that that is not accurate. I hate to say that. She said that to me, too, when I brought it up. But I do not believe that we have to sit and allow somebody to, to, to call us a bunch of, and not that it's happened here, but you guys have certainly had to deal with it, and.
Yeah, we put up, and it's a matter of when they're, when they're yelling or when they're speaking, you're listening. And, well, I, it depends on the individual, right? I, I come down on the side of the ancient legal maxim, falsus in uno, falsus in omnibus. And so there are certain individuals, certain citizens, who have established a pedigree of not telling the truth. And I don't really have to go too far in listening to them. But I do have to sit quietly while they yell and scream, and they can, because to some degree, I'm agreeing with Jennifer, as painful as that is. This is free speech. Yelling and screaming is free speech. It stops being free speech when you're saying things that are dangerous. And so yelling fire in a crowded theater is dangerous. That goes beyond free speech. Lying openly in a way that may injure others, that goes beyond free speech. And there have been cases in the BOT where, after a long rant, the mayor or one of the member, one of the trustees will set the record straight. And yet, the process of allowing the person to speak as they wish does seem to be consistent with our notion of free speech. And I, it's hard to take, I, I lose sleep over it because I, I, it's, it's hard, but to some degree, free speech is hard. So I'm, I'm coming down on the side of Jennifer with, on that one, Jim.
Okay, well, I'm.
It is hard.
We, we'll, we'll have to agree to disagree on that one because, you know, as I said, I actually remember sitting in, there were some sound issues with the board that I helped them out on. And I remember watching Paul escort some people out of some meetings for, for just continuing to monopolize the mic and say things that were not germane to the conversation. But maybe that's not something that can be solved here tonight. But, but if the situation was to arise where, you know, I mean, I don't know. Maybe we won't have that in Netherlands. Maybe that's only at other parts of the country that they're, they're dealing with that.
We can, we can stop them if they go over the three minutes. There are cer, that's a rule where we say you've got, you can speak for three minutes, and if you go over the three minutes, we can stop that. Or if they become violent, that's a case of we can stop that. Or if they start advocating things that involve violence, we can stop that. But just telling me I'm an idiot, that's free speech.
For three minutes?
For three minutes.
You wouldn't allow them to sit there and?
No, I mean, I, I can, I, I figure I gotta take it. Maybe I am an idiot, but yeah, it depends on the person.
I, I still think the chair has the right to, it says here, authority to limit debate to a reasonable length. But I think that if the speaker kind of goes off, off base or off target, I think the chair has the authority to step in and say, "Please, you know, concentrate on the issue at hand," or something like that. I think there is a moderation that the chair can do.
I believe you're correct on that, Steve. It's, it's a question of if they're on topic, but they're yelling, and they're not calling for violence, that's where you have, that's where, to some degree, you have to let them go.
Jim, are you feeling like, oh, you want it outlined in here, even if it does say the chairperson may impose a time limit upon each speaker and redirect or whatever that language looks like, you know, if the person's off topic?
I, I understood what you meant, but I didn't hear everything you said.
Broke down.
But I, I, I just seen the level, you know, the, the direction of civil discourse in our country right now, and watching what it had been in the past in our town, it seemed like something that we might want to address, but if, if that's, if I'm the only one that feels that way, then I'll, I'll, I'll just, we'll wait till it becomes a problem, I guess.
Well, I will say, Jim, there, there have been other strategies that have worked very well. For example, there was a coalition of townspeople who came to one of the BOT meetings specifically to speak out in favor of being civil and rational in our discussion. And hey, guess what? Nobody yelled at that one. So, so there, there are strategies that have worked here, and that was one of them.
Well, that was my two cents. If anybody else has anything else to add?
Yeah, I want to speak. This is Roger. What happened to the, the placard that we had with the, kind of the code, the rules, the code of conduct for speaking? Is that being used anymore? I know we're not in the, in the town hall, but there was still a document that was there.
Apparently, I mean, again, we should talk. Apparently, I mean, again, we should talk with Jennifer about this. But the argument that I heard was that is a guideline. It cannot be imposed as a rule, which is unfortunate. But that was the argument at the time, and it was from an authoritative source. And I've had to mull this over very, very seriously in my mind. And I am reluctantly accepting that that may well be the case.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, there was just, you know, there were some basic statements there. Speak, speak about the subject, not about the person, you know, things like that. You didn't direct stuff to a person. You talked about the subject. But all right, well, over the years, we've had very, very little conflict overall. So I, that's just so that Netherlands keeps being the place that it was, it is.
I said, I think the chair has the authority to step in and try to calm things down or maybe try to maybe even issue a warning if someone goes too far before taking action. So I, I think we're okay here.
There is a statement in Article eight, the second sentence, where it says, "The purpose of such code provisions is to provide a reasonable opportunity for all interested parties to express themselves as long as the testimony or evidence presented is reasonably related to the purpose of the public hearing."
So certainly for quasi judicial procedures, there is additional control because the chairperson does have to keep it to the topic.
Right.
We could add a phrase in here in the next sentence that says, "In addition to the chairperson having the authority to limit the length of time for a debate, the chairperson also has the authority to ensure that the debate is related to the purpose of the public hearing," something to that effect.
I think that's reasonable. Jim, you think that? That's sort of what you were saying, actually.
I agree. I agree. And, you know, that doesn't just give somebody three minutes to just tell you, you know, what a rotten SOB you are and how you lied to everybody and the town's corrupt, which we used to hear quite often at BOT meetings is people show up just to get their three minutes to rant at the board. And the unvetted marshal at the time, and, you know, it was, it was, I'm glad things have gotten better here. But yes, I think that that does cover it. Thank you for pointing that out, Karen.
So can we add that the chairperson has the authority to limit debate to a reasonable length of time to maintain reasonable equality of time for all positions on an issue and to ensure that the debate is related to the public hearing?
Of course, then they'll just show up at the public comment or non-agenda items and rant there, but that's okay. And that has happened.
Are we good in this section?
Okay, continue, Miranda.
All right, officers. So the one thing I actually have noted here, so obviously Cynthia is the deputy zoning administrator. Statutorily, the town clerk is really the required position of town, and that's why it reads this way. You could change this to be the deputy zoning administrator or keep it where it's in the town clerk's designate, which in this case is the deputy zoning administrator. Is there a preference?
I think this is, gives you more flexibility.
Yes, it does.
I agree. I think that that's a better way to go, just in case you need to designate somebody else for an absence or something like that.
Right.
Okay. On top of their duties, any comments there?
So the numbering is off. Are we, are we all clear on that, that somebody's going to get the Roman numerals cleared up there? Am I misreading this? It's a simple thing, but yeah, we're repeating Roman numerals now. Yeah. I often imagine, I often imagine in the Roman army having to count off, I, 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 I. Yeah, that must have been horrible.
Yeah, yeah, like dialogue with the spatial issues that kind of are throughout. This is a kind of, all this is pretty short and sweet, but anything on committees, quorum, communication or amendments? I guess we do need to talk quorum. Jennifer's recommendation is five because four is technically not half, more than half.
That's because we have nine, nine members now, correct?
Right.
I believe five would be a better number.
I concur.
Yep.
I agree with Jennifer's recommendation.
Anything else? We left four sections, or are we good? Or anything else we haven't covered here?
No, I think it looks pretty complete to me. Anyone else have any suggestions or additions or changes? Again, we'll see this next meeting, correct?
Correct, yes. And Jennifer will be here, and she can speak to some of the questions. But you'll see a revised version next meeting.
Okay. And if anyone thinks there's something in the middle of the night, they can always send that in.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you everyone. All right. Let's move on then to the ordinance eight twenty-three adoption of the 2018 building codes. And is that, Miranda, are you going to introduce this item as well?
Yes, this is long, so we're not going to go through it the same way. But before you is the 2018 building code ordinance. I know we've talked about the building code before, but it's officially an ordinance form. A point of clarification, this is coming to you at the same time it went before the board. So the Board of Trustees reviewed it last week. And some of their recommendations were to look into solar EV-ready homes, potentially doing a threshold for when sprinklers would be required. Looking into the sewer depth, currently code says the sewer depth should be forty-eight feet. Chris Pelletier would like that to be twelve, so adjusting that. And then the last thing is just looking at some of the occupancy in the residential code. So you won't see those amendments in here, but it will too come back before you. But we're just looking for initial steps. I want to thank Julian and Karen for their very thorough review of this ordinance. They both caught some grammatical and punctuation errors, which have been corrected throughout. Not necessarily content, but those corrections have been made. I don't know, Karen and Julian, if you feel like I need to go through those in detail, happy to if you think we do.
There was only one aspect of my, there was only one comment I made that I thought might be controversial, and I'll wait till we get to that section.
So yeah, I wasn't necessarily going to go section by section because it's thirty-six pages long unless Chair Williams has the desire of the planning.
The only point that I thought might be controversial was the part where it says that a temporary occupation may be allowed if the building, basically it's saying, if the building is deemed to be safe enough, someone may occupy the building before the final approval. And in that, that paragraph, it said, then those people shall occupy the building. And it's not actually like we're giving them an order to occupy the building. We're saying, we'll allow them to occupy the building because the building is safe enough. And so I suggested changing the word shall to the word can. That was, that might be controversial, but I don't think it should be. If you can spot where that, where that is, Amanda, we could kind of read that and decide if we think that ought to be shall or can.
I did. So Karen, to clarify, this version that's up before you is the one that Jennifer already made corrections to. Not a track change. But Julian, I did put yours in as track changes, and you just sent them to me.
Oh, no, no. So I'm sorry that that is not the shall and can I was meaning to talk about. That's the right paragraph, I think. Let me, let me, give me just a sec to look at that. Town may issue a temporary certificate.
You had two, I thought maybe it's this one, R one ten dot four.
Ah, here we go. What I was meaning was the first shall. So what I'm proposing is that this should say, the term, the town may issue a temporary certificate of occupancy before the completion of the entire work covered by the permit, provided that such portion or portions can be occupied safely. So we're not saying you shall occupy it safely. That would require us to monitor how they're living there and if they're playing with matches. So we would say proportion or portions can be occupied safely. We're saying as long as that building is safe, the town shall set a time period during which the temporary certificate of occupancy is valid. So that is a directive to the town. So that shall was correct. The shall that it should be a can is the part where it's saying, can the building be occupied safely? We're saying, yes, this building can be occupied safely.
Just one sentence back there, Miranda.
Oh my God, am I at the wrong one?
Miranda, can't you see I'm pointing at it? I'm pointing at it right here.
I can't, I can't see. You had two, you had two corrections. Is it the first one? Is it section one ten?
It's in section one 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 point three, temporary occupancy. All right. I, yes, I am seeing it. I'm going to read it once more, one more time. "The town may issue a temporary certificate of occupancy before the completion of the entire work covered by the permit, provided that such portion or portions can be occupied safely." That's the shall that I believe should be a can. The next one is.
Previous sentence.
That's right.
Just literally about six words back from the red can you have in there now.
Six words back. That such portion or portions can be occupied safely. There we go. You're right over it. Can be occupied safely because we're saying, if this building can be occupied safely, then this is okay. So it's really not a directive to anyone. It's just us saying, this building can be occupied safely. We've determined that. The next one, that definitely should be a shall because it's a, it's a, in the second or third person, that's an active directive to the town. Yes, that is exactly what I meant. And I have the same, yeah, and you've got the other one too. Does anyone believe that that is an inappropriate change?
Looks good.
Okay.
Looks good to me.
That was the only change I made that was not just grammatical.
Who determines if it's okay to be occupied?
The building official?
Yeah.
Would make that determination?
Like safe buildings, the permitting people or?
Dan Wester as the building official and Safe Build would make that determination for us. Yeah, so we wouldn't do that on our own.
And is there any need to specify that so that somebody doesn't read that and be like, well, my contractor says it's safe to stay in, so, and the town's code says I can stay in it, so.
I would, maybe to Cynthia, maybe that's a Dan Wester question, but Cynthia, what do you, do you think that's worth spelling out here?
I don't know that it's necessary. The building official has to sign off. They have to approve all demolitions, they have the authority. When I issue a certificate of occupancy, I am writing the words, you know, my name and for the building official. So I don't sign off on theos just as myself. I sign off, you know, deputized as the permit tech, but, you know, for the building official. So I hear what you're saying, but I think, I think it's okay.
Okay, I agree.
So the other change, oh, yeah.
Oh, are we ready to move on from this?
Yeah.
The shall can? Okay, so you mentioned a sewer depth and the, a, and some changes to the sprinkler requirements. Could you just give us an overview of what, what the proposal is for those two?
Yeah, so the sewer depth as it reads in code is forty-eight feet, or excuse me, forty-eight inches. And Chris Pelletier feels that that should remain as twelve inches. And let me go ahead and pull up his email so I don't misrepresent what he was saying. Apologies, it'll take a minute. Now, let me actually, let me switch to the sprinklers because I can't give that. So currently, the way the code reads is that we would require sprinklers for all new builds. And what's the kind of impact out in, and the feasibility of developing homes? And he asked that a threshold be established where it's only homes that are blank. And so in Boulder County, it's only homes that are two thousand square feet or more. Some of the work Rick has done has been looking at municipalities, oh, Rick, you're here, municipalities that are four hundred square feet, and so it's more like county homes. But Rick, do you want to talk more about that so I too don't misrepresent you?
Sure. Yeah, first off, Boulder County does not have a minimum size for require sprinklers. It's required for all new homes. As far as I know, I've never seen anything written in there otherwise.
So Mayor Proton today had, when I got on the phone with him, he said that in his research he's done, and he wants to talk to you separately, was two thousand square feet.
Okay. I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's correct, but I can double check that. The tiny home, yeah, the tiny home issue is something that had nothing to do with sprinklers. That's just a definition in the, in the new residential code. The twenty, well, that's, went back, the 2018 residential code defines tiny homes as four hundred square feet or less. And it's not directly related to sprinklers or anything else. That's just a definition that they use. And that was one point that was thrown out in discussion since the BOT meeting. I think that's all I have right now.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm wondering if, you know, to make these sprinkler systems affordable, if some, if lower income homeowners couldn't get some type of financial support. You know, it seems, my opinion is that, you know, it's a good idea to have it in every home. So maybe there's some other way to make it affordable other than not having the sprinklers required for smaller homes.
Yeah, there's a couple of options there that people can do. There's another type of sprinkler system that is allowed, and it's actually in the plumbing code. It's called a P twenty-nine oh four, which can be considerably less expensive. But I have not seen one of those go in in Boulder, or I'm sorry, in Netherlands or in our area of Boulder County yet. The biggest reason why people don't is they want to have things like vaulted ceilings. And those areas typically have less insulation. And therefore, they need to have antifreeze in at least part of their sprinkler system, which raises the price considerably. And you can't do the P twenty-nine oh four systems with antifreeze. So a big part of it is how people house us. I actually had a long conversation today with a sprinkler installer. And he was telling me that, yes, they can put in systems much less expensively on simple homes. Vaulted ceilings is a big issue, and it really raises the cost of them. So there's a lot of things that homeowners can do. Also, there are some, oh, what's, drawing a blank on the term I was looking for, sorry. There are some places that in homes they can put in less fire resistant materials if they have a sprinkler system. if they have a sprinkler system. So that is a cost savings as well. But that's going to depend on the house, um, and how it's built. Does that answer a few questions?
Yeah, thank you, Rick.
Sure.
And Rick, I just did a quick little search and I think Mayor, he said Boulder County, but I think he meant city of Boulder. I'm going to send this code to you that I just found that does reference this 2,000 square feet. I'm not digging into it any further at this moment, but I think that's what he's referring to.
Yeah, I, I believe the city of Boulder did do that, but not the county.
Yeah, right. So, so that's something that I guess we're still looking to, to flesh out. So, so thank you, Karen, for your recommendations and insight. If anyone else has anything they'd like to add, I know we'd love to hear it.
I would question, uh, whether or not the 12 inch, uh, depth of, of buried lines is adequate just because, and I think Steve could probably talk to this. How many times have we had frozen pipes up there on Doe Trail because of shallow, uh, water lines coming from the town? So I, I, I'm, I'm not a contractor or anything, but I'm just wondering why we're looking to keep something in place that has, uh, frozen in the past.
So here's what Chris wrote. He said a 12 inch depth should be sufficient for building sewers since they typically require a slope of at least one eighth inch per foot and theoretically have never had standing water in them. And therefore, frost depth should not be an issue, uh, because of our slopes. If the depth starts at one foot at the house, then the depth will likely increase by the time the deadline reaches the final destination.
I'm sorry, I miss, I misunderstood that. I thought we were talking about water lines, not just sewer lines. Uh, I retract my statement.
No, we're just talking, yeah, just talking sewer. Does that answer your question, Karen?
Yeah. That was, um, yeah, I, I had the same concern that Jim had, it just spoke of.
Okay.
But if these are sewer, um, but now we have had, I believe that people have had sewer lines freezing, which would cause a backup into their house. Um, so, um. Yeah, I, I guess maybe, um.
So I know when Dan Wester was asked, when Chris made this statement today in our meeting, Dan Wester agreed that if this, you know, typically they, they defer to public works to make the determination. And I know Chris has no concerns with leaving it as is. Um, if he feel like he needs to dig into this, but I know this was kind of his one and only comment on building code, was to leave it at 12 inches.
So why, I wonder why, um, the 2018 code has 48 inches. Um, and, and also I would look at what Boulder County requires.
Okay, I can ask.
I could maybe make a comment. I, I don't want to get into the utilities business that's not really mine. But Boulder County doesn't have any, uh, doesn't maintain any septic systems other than, um, the individual septic systems for houses. They don't have, uh, sewer service that the county manages anywhere in the county. So they may have very different rules on that.
Okay, so that makes sense. This is referring to the municipal sewer system and not, um, individual homeowner sewer system. Okay.
Karen, do you want, Chris, do you feel like Chris needs to do further investigation? Or does, does everyone feel comfortable with that decision?
Could you bring, could you bring up his email one more time, please?
Yeah.
While you're, while you're doing all this, this is Roger. This stuff has worked for 50 years. We've had one or two problems, maybe we have, but we've had thousands and thousands of examples of it working. Forty eight feet is ridiculously deep to go, I mean, that, that's deep. That's like, uh, I would just say that, Chris, Chris, you know, has experience. We've had experience with, uh, public works here, so I don't know why we're arguing with them.
Oh, okay, Roger. Yeah, this, um, I don't think any more investigations needed by Chris. Thank you for your, um, your comments on that.
So then I don't, Julian, would you like to just let the planning commission know where we stand on the EV solar ready? Since you were a part of that discussion today?
I'm pretty old, so I've probably forgotten most of it, but I'll try. So we were talking about two things. We were talking about electric vehicles and solar. And, uh, I'm going to turn on my video because that's, that's our rule while I'm talking at least. Uh, hope, and if, Miranda, if, if I start breaking up, uh, let me know and I'll, I'll turn it off. So we looked at some examples. I'm going to start with electric vehicles. We looked at some example code for other towns and recommendations from international, uh, it was the ICC, I believe. And the recommendation was that for any given home, there should be at least one, there's, it should be at least ready to accept an electric vehicle charging station. And that was what we called EV capable. And if someone basically, so that means you have to include room in the breaker box for, uh, a 40 amp, two 40 volt, uh, breaker. And, um, so, so you'd, you'd have a larger breaker box and you would have a conduit going from the breaker box to where the vehicle would be parked. And that would be all. And you'd have a, a pull, a pull cord through that conduit so you could pull wires. And my suggestion was, if you're going to go to all that trouble, it's going to be another 50 bucks to put in a plug. So you may as well just put in a plug. So we kind of came away from this feeling like any new house could easily simply be EV ready. That is to say, there's a 240 volt AC outlet into which you can plug your car's charger. So that was kind of where we came down as regards individual, single family homes. As regards homes or apartment complexes that have parking lots, the ICC recommendation was that you have for every hundred parking spaces, five EV chargers. And that may be fine for now, but 20 years from now, if we only have 5% EV cars, we're in big trouble. So we came down to proposing 25 EV chargers for every hundred parking spaces. That means that the neighbors within the park, within the apartment could easily come up with rotors where one would charge one day and the other would charge the next day and the other would charge the next day, and they can keep their EV, uh, vehicles, their electric vehicles fully charged in that way. So we recommended, if it's a parking lot, a new parking lot, we recommend 25% coverage for the, uh, parking spaces. As regards solar, we were not going to require solar for average size homes, but we were considering requiring that the home be solar ready. And that would be the same thing as EV capable, where you would have a breaker box set up that would be compatible with solar cells. You would have a space for the appropriate, uh, master switch for the solar cells and for the inverter. And you would have conduits and clearances as appropriate and a roof strength appropriate to support solar cells. So for a home that's less than, I think it was 3,500 feet, solar would not be required. We calculate that for a home that is 3,500 feet or larger, it's going to be hard to meet the HERS requirements without installed solar cells. But if new technology makes it possible to build a home as larger than 3,500 square feet without solar, just that still meets the HERS requirements, then that will be fine. So Miranda, in summary, hopefully, that is in, that is a full summary of what we discussed regarding EVs and solar.
It is. So those were the, the different talks that we were assigned to look into further. Um, and I actually did misspeak. This ordinance is set to have a public hearing on November 16th, which means it would not come before the planning commission for further discussion. Um, it would just, it ideally would be passed by then. So we would ask that if there is additional comments, if you're not, if you're not ready to provide them now, that you do so by the end of next week. So it goes before the board of trustees, when they do. On November 9th, they're going to look at it one more time before ideally they're adopting it. So that being said, are there any other comments or questions about the code?
Uh, Miranda, this is Steve. Um, I had one. Would you, could you bring it up again and go down to section 103? It's, it's, it's down near the bottom, actually.
It's second to catch that.
It's a, it's the one about the code official.
On what page are you talking?
Uh. Let me, let me find it here. Okay, it's, looks like it's on, um, uh, page 37. It says code official 103.
Okay.
So there's a section.
Yep, they're here.
Okay, right. So there's a section where it talks about the code official and then it goes down to the next page. And then there's another one that says section 103 IFGC code official. And it goes down further to page 39. And then there's another one that says section 103 code official. And I'm confused as to, it almost looks like some of it's just a duplicate or why it's, uh, why there are like three sections of it for code official. Maybe I'm just confused or missed something.
So I think it's, so this is international mechanical code. And then this one's international plumbing code. That's why, international plumbing code. And then you've got international fuel and gas code. And so this section, so the code official falls under each code. And so it is a duplication of duties, but it's in respect to its code. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Did you see here like F?
Yeah, no, I, I, I see that. Then it just seems like the, where it says code official, that's where it should. Uh, because it's easy to miss, um, if you go up by, like where you see F there. I don't know. It just, it just seems very confusing the way it's laid out.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's any other way to effectively do that. Because what we're saying here, like in the international fuel gas code, this section needs to be amended in its entirety. And then like same up here in the international plumbing code, this section maybe.
Maybe it's.
I think that as funky as it is, it has to.
Maybe in parentheses by section 103, um, right where you are there on, uh, page 39, that maybe it should say, right next to section 103, um, the plumbing or international fuel gas code. Well, like you did before, it's got IFGC and then if you go down to the next one, maybe it should say section 103 parentheses, um, international mechanical code or something. Just, just so each, each one is, is designated, uh, that there's a difference.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think, see any issue because she did add it for the fuel gas code. I don't know why it's on the other, so I just went ahead and added it in.
I, I, I would say that, I would say that if we're going to have an abbreviation, we must include the abbreviation after the very first mention of that term. So we know that's the abbreviation. And it also looks entirely harmless to make that bold. To, to make, to make the part announcing, we're going to a kind of a new section bold. That's a possibility too, just so it's clear.
Right, right. And that's, that's why I asked the first time.
Yeah, maybe. Just, just a suggestion. Maybe that's a good idea, maybe it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, why not? We'll do it. We'll see what Jen's like.
But yeah, my second comment was to spell out the acronym or to put the acronym in there like Julian said.
Yeah, I agree with what Julian said too for the first, at least the first occurrence. I'm wondering, you know, if we, if, as far as the bold, I'm wondering if that is the same as the current, um, way that we're doing the chapter 18. Um, so there may be a precedence already that we should follow, um, in the current municipal code, chapter 18.
But I can ask Jennifer, you're, to get clarification on this.
Or even bigger font there or something. Just so it stands out more than it did.
Okay. Okay. Other comments?
Anyone else? Okay, as, um, as Miranda said, uh, what is it, uh, November 9th? We could, um, email in additional comments if, if, uh, you find something or think about it later.
Yeah.
Okay. There's nothing else. I think we'll, we'll move on to, um, informational items. Does anyone need to take a break?
Nice. A short, short break, chair rooms.
Do you want to take a five minute break and we'll come back and finish up the informational item and then any other business? So let's, um, yeah, let's meet back here in five minutes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Hello, is there too much noise? I think we're, Steve, can you hear us?
Uh, yes.
Okay, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure I was still connected. My battery's getting pretty tired.
Uh-oh, better plug it in.
It's not a cell phone.
Roger's on the landline, Steve. So are you saying, Roger, you need to go? Is that what you're?
Uh, I think, well, let's finish speeding up. Can't believe we can go on.
I'm ready whenever everyone else is, I can be quick.
Is everybody back?
Mm-hmm.
Kim's back.
Julian's here.
Hey, Karen? Linda?
Yes, I'm here.
Cynthia?
Yes, thanks for the break.
All right, I think we should continue on before Roger's battery dies.
All right, I'll be, I'll be fast.
Okay. Yeah, but be complete.
I'll be fast and thorough.
There you go. Thank you.
All right, so to get us started, stop accolades. So I think many of you know, when someone submits a building permit or does anything through the planning and zoning department, Cynthia obviously takes the lead on that and does just a remarkable and thorough job. There's a whole team involved though too, which is Public Works in the Fire Department. And recently we got a really nice email, which I put in the report, just thanking Cynthia, Chris, Jen Landon, and Rick for going above and beyond. And as you see in this note, just acknowledges that they're the true definition of public servants and that it was a really great experience for them to work with that team. So obviously you know how wonderful it is to work with Cynthia and the rest of this group, but just wanted to thank them for everything that they do for the community and helping guide people through that planning and zoning process. Provided a COVID update. Yes, agreed. Thank Cynthia. And Rick moved on too, really appreciate it. COVID update is old, but even the data that came out today is still pretty consistent. So we are kind of in the high cases of somewhere 75 to 80 per day is where we are currently sitting. And so it kind of goes through the demographics and the vaccinations. I won't get into all of that. I'll just get into the Netherlands components. We have had some challenges with businesses who have people coming in unmasked. So Boulder County Public Health provided some guidelines for how it could help to advise customers of the mask order. So I did include that. We also purchased a ton of masks to give businesses. We currently are giving them up to 300 and are looking to give another round to businesses who need them. That way it's readily accessible when someone walks in the door to just hand them a mask. Some other updates are the COVID testing at the community center will continue until further notice on Thursdays from 4 to 6. And there's also vaccination clinics the next three Thursdays at the community center, either for the initial doses or for boosters. Currently, they are anticipating Pfizer and Moderna boosters, but there may be a chance that they get J and J as well. And it is, you don't need to make an appointment, you can just show up between 4 and 6 on Thursdays, the next three weeks. We are participating in a Roadback to Recovery project, which is teaming up with Lyons, Fair Creek, Grand, and Gilton Counties and Estes Park to work on kind of a strategy throughout our region. We're a newly identified region. But how can we work together to really identify and align our goals to make sure that we maybe are collaboratively approaching funding opportunities? And just making, and just working together to address the needs of the Peak to Peak, not just our own individual communities. So we looked to Boulder County for support, and I recently had a meeting with Gary Sampason, who asked us to write a letter to the commissioners. And what is in the report is the letter that we submitted, just asking them to not necessarily take over the process, but to really support me as staff and just Netherlands as a whole as we move forward in this recovery roadmap, which I outlined the phases of that in this. Jennifer and I attended the Colorado Municipal League Special Conference in September. That was a great opportunity to connect with different members of municipal governments throughout Colorado. Jennifer attended one session on kind of virtual meeting takeaways. And as Julian alluded to, we are all trying to keep our cameras on more and really try to keep these meetings, treat them as if we are in person. Try the best that we can to be on camera when possible, to follow the rules for established motions and procedures, and just pretend like we're in person. I once heard someone say, well, you know, it's not like it matters when I go before the boards and commissions, it's all just a bunch of black boxes. Well, we want someone, when they give their public comments or engage in an application, that they feel like they are talking to people and not just names, black boxes with names. So Jennifer gives kind of the top six pieces here, the takeaways for how to conduct meetings in this virtual setting.
I think part of the problem, Miranda, is the bandwidth. I think a lot of people, it just bogs everything down. And I think that's what caused people to turn off their cameras when they're not speaking. But like, like you said, I think if we're speaking, we should at least put our cameras on at that point.
Agreed, and we did acknowledge it really is a bandwidth. We also did accept, and I am guilty of this too, that sometimes we just do it out of habit. You know, I was notorious for leaving my mask, I'm trying to do a better job if my connectivity is fine, and leave it on. So of course, we take into consideration those components, but if it is possible to have it on, that is the request. Shelter training, I did a shelter training hosted by Red Cross two weekends ago. I have a management team for Gilton County next week. And the purpose of that is to talk about. Where can Netherlands step in for Gilton County and vice versa? From animal evacuation. And so just really establishing that relationship and ideally memorializing it in an MOU. I'm also working on an MOU school. So while I have an understanding that if the community center was compromised or couldn't access it, with schools, if needed, I mean, it's really ideal for both parties to put that in writing. So we're currently working on, again, how can the school support us and vice versa in a time of emergency? Given an opportunity to attend the virtual Colorado Planning Conference registration, it was a free registration provided to me. And a lot of that is really focused on demographic development. You know, the people who are coming and coming no matter what and how that changes our communities. So virtual is tough to attend, but as the sessions kind of roll out, it'll be good to gain some more information on the future planning and impact that may have on our planning documents, like the comprehensive plan. We are working with Boulder County on the comprehensive development plan. With doing that. And so we will participate in the meeting at the end of November to start that negotiation about whether we will keep the IGA as written, if we'll amend it, or if we'll let it expire. I briefly mentioned this earlier, but parking. Something, initial discussions have been around eliminating parking in the central business, except for new businesses. Changing the way in which parking is calculated, that counts. Essentially eliminating the parking fund. Cynthia has been leading and done some ton of research into how similar sized municipalities handle their parking code. And the plan is to provide that information to trustee Danforth and trustee Corvlin so we can make an initial recommendation. That will then be reviewed by the Board of Trustees. And they've already stated that they want boards and commissions to weigh in. So that's why I anticipate that will come before you in December.
Miranda?
Yeah.
About the parking? We do have a parking plan, an official document that sets out a long range plan for parking. Now, is trustee Danforth and trustee Corvlin aware of that document? Are they taking a look at that? Also, if we eliminate parking requirements, where are the cars going to go? All I see here is that you're going to remove parking requirements, you're going to get rid of the parking fund. So, you know, what, where are the parking lots? Where are the cars going to go?
Miranda, may I answer that?
Of course, please.
So we've discussed this at length, and I'm going to turn off my video. There we go. So we've discussed this at length. And for the Central Business District, the key problem is there just isn't land. The land is all owned by people who aren't going to let us use it for parking. And so there's not a lot we can do. The alternatives include the possibility that we may advertise Netherlands as a town that you don't need to drive to. Provide a rotor, provide a bus that follows a regular schedule all from the RTD bus parking lot all the way up to the community center and then down to the high school and back. I ran that circuit, hitting the post office and everything, and it was about 30 minutes. And so the question is, could we say, look, don't, don't bring your car here. Bring the bus, and we will take you wherever you need to go and then get you back to the bus on time. That's only one suggestion, but that's one possibility for the fact that, you know, for dealing with the fact that there's, there's no land to support this. And so that's why every single new business comes to the BOT and asks for a variance. And we say, what are we going to say? There's no parking.
The parking plan does show parking lots, public parking lots on the outskirts of town.
Well, and that's where, that's, and that's possible. I haven't seen that. I'm looking forward to seeing that then. But the, and we own the land on the outskirts of town? Yeah, see, and that's, that's part of the problem, and.
Well, it's a problem that can be fixed. So.
Yeah, so if it can, that's great, and that's where, yeah. Yeah, if that document is included in our discussions, that's fine. But providing additional parking is one possibility, and the other is making the requirement for parking less by providing for better public transportation within the town.
Okay. I just wanted to get my two cents in there while we were on the topic. Thank you.
Yeah, we, that topic came up really late at the end of a meeting, and so we haven't had a ton of time to flesh this out. And so again, anything brought back to the board will really be preliminary, the information researched. And so we did not bring the parking plan initially because the aim was just ask for feedback. But the intention would be to bring the parking plan and the research Cynthia has done before the Board of Trustees to help further guide this discussion. And then, as I stated, we'll integrate the Planning Commission into that towards probably December. Some more to come on parking. You know, I think the big thing in why this came about is, is the Planning Commission. You may know, two variances were recently granted on the parking count. One for Katmandu and one for Bucy Brews that took them down from needing, and Katmandu, I believe, was 38 down to six spaces that were approved. And Bucy went from 35 down to 12. And so there was clearly, if variances were just going to be granted, there was obviously a code issue that needed to be assessed. Okay, the other thing is the community revitalization grant. You may have heard about this. There was a grant opportunity to look into mixed use buildings. That could be a combination of housing, retail, nonprofit, commercial space. Really, it's pretty open ended. But the town was interested in potentially pursuing a mixed use that combined the clothing closet, the food pantry, artist space. And originally it was a medical facility, but later transitioned to housing and putting it at the Old Town Shop site. It was met with some concern by the neighbors. And at this point in time, the grant is really probably no longer real estate required. But I think the great thing that came out of this whole process is that we really need to take an assessment of all of our vacant land and do community outreach to find out, you know, if it is the Old Town Shop, what do people feel like should be there? You know, or if it's, you know, there's some parcels as you head out of town, what do people feel those should be? And so identifying what is public land and asking for that feedback. So currently, we're working on developing a really intense community outreach strategy to start to gain that feedback. And once we have it, of course, and the goal is, if we know this parcel of land is perfect for, say, affordable housing, we can then seek the grants to match the project versus oftentimes the other way around. So I'm really looking forward to reviewing that with the board, ideally at the second meeting in November, what that outreach strategy will look like.
Perhaps a parking structure.
Yeah, a parking structure, exactly. And we're trying to convince RTD to do it. But yeah, I mean, that's a, some great opportunities. We do kind of want to leave it open ended, where we're not saying, you know, of these three choices, pick one. It's more here, you know, here's a blank slate. What do you imagine and feel is appropriate for this site? The Peak to Peak cousin, Human Services Alliance, that was awarded the Healthy Communities Award. And so that is in your pocket. For those of you who have not heard, Chris Curran, who is. Um, for those of you who have not heard, Chris Curran, who is the Executive Director of the Food Pantry, she is resigning, retiring of sorts. Uh, she will still volunteer with the Food Pantry, but she has done a ton of work and is a big part of them being awarded the Healthy Communities Award.
Oh, Miranda, um, back to the, um, identifying, um, property that would be appropriate for, um, uh, what the, um, I guess that was for the food bank, for the pantry? You know, I... All of that, those are kind of zoning issues and planning issues, which should be in our comprehensive plan, laying out where the parking will be, you know, transportation flow,
Yeah.
where a community center will be, where these public services will be. I feel like we're... This is happening piecemeal. We really need to, um, look at a long-range plan for the town and include all these different components. Instead of doing it kind of on the fly when we have a, you know, emergency to take care of, you know, and, um, it should be a long-range plan that we're following and that we put together as part of the comprehensive plan.
I do agree. So the directive was given by the Board of Trustees to work on everything. Um, I will make note of that in the aim, and I guess my ask, too, Karen, would be if you wanted to sign an email, um, providing that feedback as well. You know, of course, we are... So I'm looking at an administrative grant with DOLA to get the funding to start the comp plan next year. Um, you know, of course, the town staff will follow the directive given by the board, but if you were comfortable, I think it would be great if they heard from you, um, and feeling like that business needs to be on that long-range planning.
Right, and you know, that is one of the responsibilities of the Planning Commission, is to lead that effort. Um, so as far as the, uh, what's in the, um, Colorado State statutes and, um, also in our code. So, um, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and when I say this, I agree. When I say securing the funding, so we, of course, will be looking at a third party to support and work directly with the Planning Commission and respective boards on the development of the comprehensive plan. And so that's where the funding becomes the piece, not necessarily for anyone to do it, but to just make sure we have the financial resources to hire that company and do the search for them. All right, we are deep in the town's marshal recruitment. We are currently accepting resumes up until next Monday, the eighth. I believe we received, um, about fifteen, and half of those, I would argue, meet the minimum qualifications. But we do have a committee that is set to look at, to really narrow them down. Um, this initial review committee is just looking at, really, do they meet the minimum education experience and requirements? They'll take these applications to a full application review committee, and they will narrow down to ideally the top three candidates. From there, the candidates will have four interviews. They'll do one with our internal team, being department heads and two BOT members, one with law enforcement personnel, um, one which is the Board of Trustees that's open, and then an interview in the sense of a community meet and greet. Uh, we then hope to narrow down to two candidates, and the new marshal will be selected by, uh, December twenty-first. There are four community members who are serving on the review application committee that were selected, uh, at the last BOT meeting. So it is a large group, and we will meet, uh, the week of the fifteenth to narrow down that final group of candidates. I have been asked to help, too, with the fire chief recruitment, um, to represent town staff in that, and so I look forward to seeing how that unfolds. I believe they received twenty-five applications, and are going to work on narrowing that down as well. And as always, I like to do a public works update. I don't necessarily speak to the U because I'm not the expert, but I would ask that you reach out to Chris Pelletier if you have questions. But I just think it's good to know the infrastructure and maintenance things that are happening around town. And that, Chair Williams, is the end of my point.
Okay. Thank you, Miranda. Um, that takes us into any other business. Does anyone have any other business to bring up or comments to make at this point?
This is Jim Reese. I was just wondering, uh, what the progress was or if we had any kind of a date on when we might return to in-person meetings.
So we are meeting with our last two companies that we're interviewing to do hybrid tomorrow. We plan to select that person on Friday, and then we have asked that whoever the company is we've hired will complete the work by, uh, November. And so the Planning Commission could potentially return hybrid in December if you'd like. That's assuming all goes well. I guess I should offer that little asterisk clarification. But I do, we do expect, you know, we need to use the remaining of our CARES funding. We have about ten thousand dollars, and the plan is to dedicate that entirely to ensuring we are set up for hybrid, um, including the possibility of having individual microphones, um, and being able to kind of spread the room out a little bit more so people can still social distance. And so we'll invest all those funds toward the collusion network.
So these would be all the boards that would, uh, do a hybrid? Or are we looking at, like, one board to just try it out, or how would you implement it?
I mean, we'll have boards try it out, and I think we felt like Pro 7 and Sab might be the most appropriate to try it out first, um, because they go later in November. Uh, but that is then the goal is for every board. Normally, like, Pro 7 and Sab aren't set up with the microphones. We would be moving to every board being set up the same way so that we can record it and have people participate from home, including both board and commission members and the community.
Okay, thank you.
We do, I guess, one thing I should clarify, though, we do anticipate the mask order will stay in effect through the holidays. Um, so if they return in person, people would need to mask those who are in person.
Miranda, had a quick question on, um, on your summary. Is there any update or any status on the Big Spring Emergency Egress? Or is that, everything's been submitted and we're just sort of waiting, or?
So we... It did not end up being selected to move forward for funding with Nogus just because of just other funding areas of focus, like the infrastructure plan. And really, the holdup is that, uh, we now need to find a new funding source. We do plan to reconvene the Big Springs Egress Committee, which is Mayor Larson, trustee Corvlin, and Jesse Ansari. Because those are three important members, it will be a publicly noticed meeting. Um, and at that meeting, we'll really just talk about, like, where did we leave off? Where are we going? And what are our other funding opportunities?
Okay.
So I can send that to the Planning Commission if that's a desire, when we set that meeting, um, so you can join if you're interested.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anything else?
This is Rick Hendricks, and I have one more thing.
Yeah, Rick.
Um, I looked into the two thousand square foot number that came up with either Boulder County or the City of Boulder on their sprinkler requirements, and what I found is that neither the City of Boulder or the county have a lower limit on where sprinklers are required for residential structures. What I did see, though, is that the City of Boulder lowered the square footage requirement for a lot of commercial buildings, meaning they made those more restrictive, and they lowered a bunch of those to two thousand square foot. Um, I'd have to go through line by line with the actual code versus their amendments to see all of the changes they made. But everything that I saw was on commercial buildings, not on residential.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, I think. Okay, um, the only other thing I wanted to bring up is that if we have meetings that are pretty light, I'm wondering if we should start to look at, uh, some of the other review items, particularly with the planning and zoning, uh, as we come through the code and so forth. There was a kind of a shopping list that was made up, uh, some time ago, and I wonder if we should revisit that to, um, add that to our agendas if we have a light. Uh, that might be worth starting to knock some of those out. Miranda, do you know what list I'm talking about?
Yeah, our... Yes, and we've got a... I think it's going longer, but we have done this even more. We've added even more to this municipal code. Just let them happy to quickly pull it up so people can... So this list is in combination with the list that Dallas had started. And so let me just get to planning and zoning. We have this whole section.
Yeah.
And so Cynthia, uh, all these challenges within planning and zoning. So we'd love to, it's kind of our wish list. We'd love to someday get to this.
That's the one I was talking about, so it's, uh... Maybe you and I can discuss this further, but, um, maybe other Planning Commission members can kind of weigh in as well as to, uh, what maybe in priority order, what, how we should start to attack some of these, if we have time in some of these meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to, then, we'll just take this list, um, Steve, and we'll all talk about it. We'll talk to what gets on back to the...
I'm sorry, say that again?
Were you thinking that we would talk about it with the commission, and then we'd come back to the commission?
Yeah, maybe we should do that. Again, as part of the, you know, cleanup, um, that we talked about with the code.
So can I add an item to that list? And that is to consider adding, um, parking lots to the use code?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So, um, Karen, do you want to maybe just send out that revised list that you have to the commission? That would be a good start.
Yeah. It's definitely in a rough form, so excuse us. We throw our thoughts onto a piece of paper, but I will send this out.
Right. Well, that's why I was sort of asking the commission to kind of look at it and maybe put it in priority order or suggesting, um, how we might want to attack it. Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, um, I will, uh... Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
I second.
Okay.
In favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-three AM.
Thanks, all.